Glad that you're back together. Do you have a minute? I don't know which, I don't know which copy. I think the five B, so that's the one. That's the clean copy. Yeah, and then we have.
That's the right. All's right.
Oh, that's right. You're right. The ones.
Betty Allen. Betty Allen.
So.
Oh, yeah.
She just left here in tears.
She's.
I handed out a clean copy of it.
Okay, make sure you.
Yeah, yeah, make sure he has that.
I'll email you.
I like your approach. Brandon, do you want to get ready? I think they are.
Is this Doug's first meeting?
The meeting is back in order and we will be starting. Oh, we are still in unfinished business. B, um, the council. Thank you. We are back in session and we are continuing with unfinished business. B, resolution. If the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by council member Nathan Schmidt adopting revised city council rules and procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Um, I would just like to present the, uh, proposing council rules that we've been discussing for the last several weeks and, uh, offer a motion.
I, uh, you want to check, make sure your mic is on? Thank you.
I'm not that interesting anyway.
Does the council all have their mics on now? All right, continue.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the, uh, the council rules as proposed and as have been discussed in the last several meetings.
Okay, and Ms. Delise lost seconds. And I believe those are five B that we had in front of us. So we're all together on what we're talking about, five B. And that, I think, is, uh, I've been informed that it's called a clean copy with all of the changes made. Mr. Sublett, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor. The attachment that you have that was on the agenda has the underlined version of it, but I also wanted you to have a clean copy so that you would see what it would look like without all the strikeouts and underlining, because sometimes that can be confusing. So those are the two copies you have in front of you.
Okay, so if you have the other copy, uh, with you, which is furnished, provided, uh, you do have all the, these strikeouts. And actually, as I understand, this, the new copy is, uh, the five B takes into consideration, uh, some of the suggestions that were made at the session when it was discussed.
Correct.
Um, I'm sorry. You, well, I'm, I'm still trying to get, get us all together. Is that correct, what my statement is?
Yes, the clean copy incorporates all the changes that we discussed last week. So the only difference between the two documents is the document that was attached to the agenda has underlines and strikeouts. All of those are reflected in your clean copy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we made a lot of changes and there were some changes to me that was unclear. So I would like to know, I don't care if this is a clean document, I would like to know what changes are in this document.
Okay, I can go, I can go through them.
Okay, yeah, I think perhaps, do you have the copy with you of the, the copy with the strikeouts?
Yes.
And that would, and by going through there, then, we would see the changes that have been made. Okay, if you want to proceed with that. Maybe just like before, we go quickly through, uh, section one, section two, general rules.
Um, there was discussion in terms of shutting down or muting electronic devices. We made the change that was suggested. We eliminated after the word room, line eighty-nine through ninety-four, um, and added down mute, so you could turn off or mute any device or instrument capable of emitting an audible sound or tone before entering the meeting room.
Okay, um, then I don't see any others in two general rules in three types of meetings.
If you turn to page six, lines two oh three through two oh six, um, added except for emergencies, the shitty, the city clerk.
Well, we'll just take our time and we'll do this slowly and we'll, we'll get it, we'll get our, it's tired, it's late. On page six, uh, starting on line two oh three, two oh four, two oh five, we can all read that for ourselves, perhaps.
Except for emergencies, the city clerk shall provide documented notice of special meetings to the city manager, the entire governing body, and shall post the notice of the city's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting date.
And that was the meeting in order to have, make sure that we have public notice appropriately. That takes care of three. On four, I don't, I don't see any changes in, um, section five agendas, five-two.
Page eight, lines, um, two fifty-nine through two sixty-one, unless the governing body has taken action to defer an item to a date certain, or the item has been considered by a council committee pursuant to rule eight point five B.
And that was, it's referred to, the city manager may remove an item that's not ready unless.
Right.
It's already, it's very, it's stated that it must be covered, it must be handled in this particular meeting.
Yes.
Okay, agendas, there's a minor one there on, under public comment on page nine.
Yes, page.
I'm sorry, let's go up on page above that agenda items, under consent agenda.
Yes, um, lines two seventy-five and two seventy-six on page nine, we just, um, put in, we deleted removed and put move to action items. Any item may be considered separately by request of a council member or the city manager, in which event the item will be moved to action items.
Okay, yeah, and I think, and that's really our policy.
Right.
The way we do it right now, but it's putting in write, putting it in writing. Okay, and five-four.
Lines two ninety-nine and three hundred, again on page nine.
No, there's one earlier on five-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, two ninety-one. Um, in terms of planning department agenda items, no additional public hearings shall be held by the governing body.
And that was the issue on allowing people to speak or not speak, uh, after they go before the planning commission and then coming before the council. Mrs. Hiller.
So this term clarifies that we're talking about kind of a term of art, that we will not have any public hearings, but it wouldn't preclude a choice of taking comments.
Yes.
Correct? Thank you.
I think that's the way I interpret it.
Thank you.
Okay, number, and then public comment.
Lines two ninety-nine and three hundred, um, I'm going to start a little earlier than that to give some context. The request should state the name of the individual desiring to be heard. Comments pertaining to personnel and litigation matters shall not be allowed.
And the thinking there was that we do, we, we should allow public comment on ordinance since many times that's what they are commenting on.
Yes, that, that was the, I believe it was Councilwoman Hiller's, that was the emphasis for that amendment.
Okay, that completes section five. Section six. I see just on page twelve.
Page twelve, lines four fifteen through four seventeen, calling the question, what was eliminated was discussion debate of the original motion may be continued between members of the city council and the city manager until the question is called. A call for the question, if seconded, shall immediately end all debate and discussion, and if passed by two-thirds vote, the current motion must be voted on without delay, provided, however, that the call of the question shall not be implemented until all members of the council has, have had an opportunity to speak to the current motion.
Okay, any questions? All right, the seven ordinances and resolutions.
Line four twenty-nine is simple, putting it in a sub A. Four thirty, lines four thirty-one through four thirty-four, in keeping with TPC, with TMC, section A two dash twenty-eight, sub C, which prohibits governing body members from giving orders to staff, any requests by members of the governing, governing body for preparation of ordinances or resolutions shall be directed to the city manager.
And where that starts out, um, learning, in keeping with TMC, that is our charter. So it's, this is the way our charter is stated. So we're making it in, in line, in, in proper manner as our charter is.
Four thirty-six and, lines four thirty-six and four thirty-seven, we had had a discussion about novice and, and there was a really good point about we may not always have known novice, so all ordinance and resolution shall address fiscal impacts, if any, and identify funding sources.
All right, that is in addition to what we are currently have. We do that in a sense, but now it makes it more specific on, then on the, the next page.
Page thirteen, lines four fifty-three through four fifty-seven, um, subsection C, notice, no action shall be taken on any ordinance or resolution unless the item has been provided to the governing body at least five days prior to a council meeting. The restriction shall not apply to ordinances or resolutions that, one, have no administrative impact, and, two, no fiscal impact greater than five thousand dollars.
Okay, this is making it more specific about the five days notice, uh, for action and, um, when it shall not apply. And then under committees.
Page fourteen, lines five oh one and, uh, five oh two, all standing committees comprised of all members of the council. Deputy mayor shall be the chair of the budget, long-range planning, and the committees of the whole. This speaks to the mayor, shall serve as non-voting advisory member of all standing committees comprised of all members of the council.
Okay, any questions? That's, this is on page fourteen, it's lines five oh one, five oh two. And at the present time, um, the mayor is an advisory member of the budget committee, but not a member of the other, of the committee of the whole. And it's just saying that I, the mayor's position, the mayor will also be an advisory member of the committee of the whole. Hasn't been in the past. Okay, um, special committees on page fifteen.
Page fifteen, lines five seventy-six and seventy-eight were changed. Alternate members of committees, if a member of a committee cannot be present at the meeting, an alternate council member may be appointed to serve at that meeting with full voting rights. The alternate shall be appointed by one of the following.
Okay, I think that's clarifying, making it clearer what, and we don't use that a great deal, but it is there and, uh, and it is, and it's appropriate, I believe, on, okay. On sixteen, page sixteen, the eight four, eight, eight dash fourteen.
Page sixteen, li, oh, sorry, um, line six fifteen, except as otherwise provided, the public portions of any committee meeting shall be televised, we stroke live, subject to budget constraints or technical difficulties.
And just to clarify, I just thought, now, we don't have an ordinance on this, do we? This is just the rules and proc, if we change the rules and procedures, there's not an ordinance that says we have to televise live. Okay, thank you. And you had that, that minor discussion on that.
Yes.
Okay. And then the, addressing the council.
Again, on page sixteen, line six twenty-seven through, or sorry, six twenty-six to six twenty-nine, what was stricken were, no question shall be asked of the council members or by, or by council members. Any question asked by the person having the floor or by council members shall be allowed at the sole discretion of the meeting chair.
And I believe that's the, the process we're pretty well using right now. Um, and it's a, a gray area, how that's handled, and I think we try to do, use it in a manner that's, that's, that's workable. Um, okay. Page seventeen.
Page seventeen, which I believe is the last, um, change based on our conversation last week, lines six forty through six forty-two, communication with the governing body, nothing in these council rules shall be construed to limit a person's ability to contact members of the governing body.
Okay.
Believe that incorporates all the changes we discussed last week, um, as we could, as we could write them down.
Okay. All right, is there discussion, Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is the first comprehensive, uh, revision of our council rules, uh, since, since I've been on council, and this is a good document. And I just want to express my appreciation to our legal staff, um, and council members who have worked and contributed mightily, uh, to the production of what I think is a very good, very good document. I just want to express my appreciation. Thank you.
We have a motion, uh, in a second. And attached to this, if you saw, there, there is a resolution. Uh, and the resolution just says that we, by passing this resolution, we are adopting the rules and procedures and as is stated in five B, or it's called attachment A here. Yeah, Mrs. Ortiz.
Chad, did this address the deputy mayor, um, running the budget committees?
We, um, we didn't change that. The deputy mayor still runs the budget committee.
I know, we talked about it.
Yeah, we, we talked about it, but we didn't feel like there was consensus to make that change.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a page seventeen on this, and I also don't have mine number, so if you could.
On page thirteen, the very top sentence states, the deputy mayor shall be the chair of the budget. That, that's in the section understanding committees, D, it lists the three standing committees. It's part of that eight point two-three. Okay, I'm sorry. Are there other questions or discussion? Mrs. Hiller.
There was one, one small thing that we talked about last meeting that, that it turned out could not be accommodated in the rules, and that was being able to approve committee minutes by email or by just a voicemail. Um, I think Mary had a legal opinion that, that there's something that says they have to be done by a vote in a meeting. Um, I'm hopeful that we could, I tried to think that through because I really do think that's awkward and it's not worth spending the money and the time to have some organized televised meeting just for two minutes for people to approve minutes. I'm hopeful that maybe we could be able to schedule those kinds of meetings where that's all we had to do, like at, at five fifty-five, right before council meetings, when the television's already set up and just, or something like that, where we can tag on to someplace we are to keep it simple.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree. I think, again, this is a document, it can be changed. And we, we will see other things, I'm sure, um, that can be changed.
Well, I guess we couldn't do it. I, I think we've actually done them that way by just sort of an assent.
Yeah.
But I guess we have to do something else.
Is there other discussion? A call for the, the vote, all those in favor of the resolution that will create the rules and procedures, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight, having voted yes, uh, the resolution is approved. Uh, we proceed to new business, ordinance on expenditures.
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of March first, twenty fourteen, through March twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, and enumerating said expenditures therein, first and final reading.
City manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This approval would author, authorize city expenditures in the amount of seventeen million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
All right, Mr. Schmidt. Move to approve. It's been moved to approve. Mr. Campos, seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is to legal. Where in state statute does it require us to approve these expenditures?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I could research that and get back to you, but I don't have the answer right now. Okay, we will take that as a request, um, to have that documentation. Is, is there other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine, having voted yes, the, um, ordinance on expenditures is approved. I don't believe there are malt beverage or scrap metal dealer applications. So we go to, um, the, the item that was placed away, two that we replaced here, um, the first one, if the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by council member Karen Hiller, granting downtown Topeka Inc. and the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, section nine forty-five, one fifty, et cetera, concerning noise prohibitions.
Mrs. Hiller.
Move to approve.
All, it's been moved to, and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I'm sorry, Mrs. Ortiz.
I guess this is for legal. Um, I noticed that we, we are extending, like way out in October. This is May, July, August, I thought. I thought this other one said that.
I think this one has on the second page, on the, on the backside, um, occurring May second, June sixth, July five, July eleventh, August one, so that's.
Okay, well, be it as it may, and maybe, um, I know John's had way in October that, that you approved. These are dates that are very far out there, um, to the, to the city attorney. Let's say, um, we start this event and it just becomes horrendous. What, since we've already approved it, um, how, how do we go back and recap that?
How could Mr. Sublett?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, so there's a question, is, if we approve one of these, how could we, um, rescind the, rescind the ordinance essentially?
Well, if I may.
For certain dates?
If I may, like, let's just take this one, okay? Um, and it has the dates of May the second, June the sixth, July fifth, July eleventh, and August the first. So the first two events, May the second, June sixth goes okay. But then we see that this is really a nuisance, we start getting all these complaints, we've already approved all these dates.
So we can make an, an ordinance to repeal it at that point if they so chose to.
Or the police could recommend that.
Right.
This is a nuisance and we need to curtail it.
Right.
In something in that manner. I would think that would be our, the, the procedure.
Yeah, and.
That we would use.
Be like any other ordinance, you can repeal. You pass an ordinance, you can repeal an ordinance, so.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure, because I know, like, the one Mr. Aquila had, or Mr., excuse me, Mr. Campos had, it was like way in October, and I, I just think that's a lot of events and that's a long ways off, that we don't know how that's even going to affect that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would it be fair to say, uh, Mr. Sublett, that, um, if a neighbor called and, uh, they were complaining that these events were disturbing one's peace, that, that would be, uh, essentially the acolyte shield to rescind it?
I would assume you'd want to send that to the chief of police and not to me as the law enforcement agent for the city. And then, I mean, if you're, if you're asking me to draft an ordinance to repeal it, I mean, our legal team would review that, but if you think that there is a public nuisance or a criminal activity, I would think the chief of police would be the person that you would direct that concern to.
But it, it would be fair to say that this resolution doesn't necessarily and solely protect the person who's creating the nuisance, correct?
Correct.
One could say you're, they're disturbing my peace, I'll sign the ticket and then show up to court, correct?
Correct.
So there, there are tools out there for our constituents. I just want to make sure that's correct. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes and Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Okay, eight having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Now we have a second resolution introduced by, um, Councilwoman Hiller. Mrs. Hiller. I'm sorry, you're correct. Thank you. Will clerk read?
D is a resolution introduced by council member Karen Hiller, approving a special event known as the First Friday Concert Series.
Thank you, Ms. Hiller.
Move to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Mr. Schmidt, seconds. Is there discussion? Ms. Hiller.
Just one comment to my colleagues and to the public. My mantra to all the folks, both the businesses as well as individuals that have wanted to do events is six weeks out, six weeks out, six weeks out, and I encourage you all, if you know anybody that's doing events, that these are seasons, which helps because we won't have to approve them one at a time. But also with our council meeting schedule now, where there are three and sometimes four weeks between meetings, people really do need to get these done before their events, of course, so really encourage people to get them in early. Thank you.
Is there other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Okay, eight having voted yes, the, um, resolution is approved. Um, next we have first readings. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the northeast intersection of southwest Westport Road and southwest twenty-second terrace, City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, from M three, multiple family dwelling district to O and I two, office and institutional district, first reading. B is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property at thirty-three, thirty-seven northwest Lower Silver Lake Road and the west half of property at thirty-three, eleven northwest Lower Silver Lake Road from R one, single-family dwelling district with a special use permit for a vegetable market, all to I one, light industrial district, first reading. C is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property at eight hundred Southwest Lane Avenue from O and I one, office and institutional district to MS one, medical services district, first reading. D is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson concerning historic preservation, amending City of Topeka Code sections two sixty zero ten, two sixty zero twenty, eighteen two fifty-five zero twenty, eighteen two fifty-five zero thirty, eighteen two fifty-five zero forty, eighteen two fifty-five zero sixty, eighteen two fifty-five zero seventy, eighteen two fifty-five zero ninety, eighteen two fifty-five one ten, eighteen two, two fifty-five one forty, eighteen two fifty-five one sixty, and eighteen two fifty-five one seventy, and specifically repealing said original sections, as well as repealing in their entirety sections eighteen two fifty-five zero fifty, eighteen two fifty-five zero eighty, eighteen two fifty-five one hundred, eighteen two fifty-five one twenty, and eighteen two fifty-five one thirty, first reading.
Thank you. We will proceed with presentations. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really wanted to introduce Doug Gerber, who is sitting in the front row. Uh, Doug is the, uh, we hired him several months ago, but he finally got here. He was the, formerly the city manager in the city of Goodland and joined us as director of finance administration. This is his first meeting today. He's been, uh, on board for about a week and he's, four days, so he's still here, so that's good. Second thing I really, I wanted to talk about the countywide Hessen sales tax, um, open houses, uh, town hall meetings that we're having. The first one is this Thursday, April seventeenth, from five-thirty to six-thirty at the Avondale East Net Center on Gulf Park Boulevard. The second is set for, uh, April twenty-first, next Monday, from seven to eight PM at the Topeka and Shawnee County Public Library in the Marvin Auditorium. The structure of this forums, they'll be led by the mayor and, and council members, you all have been involved. I, you all have been involved, uh, contacted. Uh, the idea is to hear the thoughts of the residents of this community on the countywide half-cent sales tax. City staff will be available to provide information and answer any questions as we go forward. The objective is to come back to this body, um, in the first meeting in May, and to get direction and that we can provide to the county as they move forward towards, uh, their decisions on the countywide half-cent sales tax.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to comment on, um, in, in a sense, this is a turning point because with this meeting, the new, uh, rules and regu-, rules and procedures go into effect. And starting with May, we will have a new agenda. There will be no work session. Tonight, we heard, this is the last time we had, uh, first readings. So that measure, um, as you know, I proposed these last fall after looking at other cities and seeing ways in which I thought we could improve our meetings, make them more productive, uh, and recommended that we make the changes with the, um, uh, ceasing of first readings. And instead, the city clerk will provide an overview of the agenda for next week, which would include all items, not just those specifically, like tonight, again, we had four items. But I imagine that next meeting we'll have probably ten or twelve items. But, uh, they don't meet the criteria to be read, so, uh, the persons do not, are not aware of them. And secondly, we will no longer have work sessions. I think that we have almost, the work sessions have almost been a disservice because we never notice up what is the topics, or we do, but it's, it's somewhat internal. Uh, and I think that's an example where we had presentations on the code compliance in the work sessions three different times. Um, and because of our rules or how we operate, perhaps they weren't as public as they should be. In the future, all discussions we've had in work sessions before will be in the, in the meetings themselves. Therefore, they are a part of our legal body, and they will be noticed. So everyone will know what areas of discussions are being held. Uh, and also, this will allow us to have, in the past, when we have executive sessions, usually we have these, uh, at the, usually at the end of the work session, when the room is full. Now, they will most likely be at the end of a meeting when, and then the audience and staff are free to leave, and then everybody can stay and have a work session as needed. So I, I think these are, I look forward to the change. Uh, not that it's all going to work perfectly. We'll, we'll have to work through it. It's going to be some challenges perhaps, but, uh, I think in the long run, I, I think it'll be some, I think it'll make us a, a more effective council. Of course, that remains to be seen. Uh, Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to compliment city staff, uh, and council staff. I was driving the last couple of days down Fifteenth Street, and the storm, uh, from this weekend had put a lot of leaves and road debris and mud and everything in some of the valleys. And I emailed city staff and said, hey, you know, can you go check out these inlets and, uh, make sure we get them cleaned out before they all go into the inlet and clog it up? And of course, true to form, they were already scheduled to be there tomorrow and take care of it. So, uh, I think they do a great job, and, uh, you know, I think it's, uh, something we all, as, as neighbors and community members, can pitch in together to help clean up some of those issues, but if folks have those problems in their community, I know any council member here would be happy to turn those in, or you can use the three-one-one system. And that would, uh, also, a segue into three-one-one, I've heard some compliments from some of my constituents on the use of that system, how easy it is, uh, how effective it is to get results, and then understand what those results are. So just another thing that we've done here in the past year, staff has done in the past year, to help us become a little bit more engaged and, and responsive, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I would like to, um, echo what, what you said and what Councilman, Man Speaker said, and send my condolences, and best wishes to all of the people touched by the tragedy in Overland Park, uh, in the past week. And I would also like to discuss, I went to a meeting yesterday of Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods, and then this morning, I went to the Intergovernmental Council Meeting. And after listening to all we've gone through tonight and to Mr. Colson talk about the, um, upcoming discussions on the countywide half-cent sales tax, I, I just wanted to point out that, that those two organizations, and there are other organizations, uh, the new, the director of Heartland Visioning, John Hunter, was at both of those meetings, actually. Um, the start of Noto, or the start of the downtown renovations, Noto, the progress that we're making at the zoo. There's a lot of organizations in this city that are combating the kind of negativity that we've too often been, been caught up in, and that has too often ground us to a halt, um, as far as progress with the city. And so I would encourage everybody to get to those meetings, if you can, either one, on, uh, I believe Thursday at five-thirty at the Avondale East Center, and then, um, at the, the library next Monday at seven o'clock, which brings me to my next point. Go there at five-thirty instead of seven o'clock because there is a Community Wide Read, um, sponsored by the library, and Five-O-One is working with this as well. The book is Courageous Conversations on Race by Glenn Singleton. There are copies of this available at the library and through Five-O-One. Uh, the first discussion will be on the first three chapters of that. Uh, this was set up in recognition of this being the sixtieth anniversary of the historic Brown versus Board of Education decision, Topeka Board of Education decision that came down in this city, um, an anniversary that we are quickly approaching. And I would encourage everybody to both read the book and to join us for the discussion, if they're at all able, and then follow that up with, uh, going over to the half-cent countywide sales tax meeting and seeing what you can do to make your community better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Mr. Colson and I will not be able to meet at the, uh, Thursday evening meeting. Will somebody from the city be taking notes or so that, that can, input can be given to me? Uh, the second thing, uh, we lost a couple of, uh, important citizens this past week. In the obituaries, actually, on successive days, uh, we noted the death of, uh, Secretary Robert Harder, who many around this table knew and, and worked with. And then, the next day was the obituary of Jim, uh, Jim Olson. When Sylvia and I first got on the council, Jim Olson was Executive Director of the, uh, Community Resource Council. I think he retired in two thousand and eight. Both Dr. Harder and, uh, Mr. Olson represent true, uh, and dedicated public servants. They gave their careers to, um, advocating for children and for, uh, the less fortunate in our, in our communities. And their loss, uh, is, is significant. Uh, Topeka and the state of Kansas is a better place because we have been served, uh, by Dr. Harder and, uh, Mr. Olson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Those are very appropriate. Mrs. Hiller?
Uh, one announcement. As people know, the Sumner School is in the middle of my district and, and has been vacant and, and of great concern to people in the community for a long time. In honor of the sixtieth anniversary of Brown v. Board, the, um, an emerging group, Brown v. Board, Sumner Legacy Trust, in partnership with the Ward Mead Neighborhood and the National Park Service, will be doing tours of the grounds. There will be a legacy walk from the Monroe School to the Sumner School, uh, one in the morning and one in the afternoon on May seventeenth, the anniversary of the signing. And there will be a neighborhood picnic the afternoon of Sunday, the eighteenth. I mention that now because, uh, the National Park Service has offered to train, professionally trained volunteer docents who would like to help with those tours and who would be willing to also, uh, take short-form oral histories from people who have stories they want to tell about the Sumner and Brown v. Board experience. That training is Saturday, is this Saturday morning, April nineteenth, from nine to noon. And those who want to do oral histories would come also on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday evening, from five to seven. Registration for that is with Stephanie Kuriasis at the National Park Service, but if people have trouble catching up with that, they can get hold of me, and I can certainly get volunteer information forwarded to the Brown site, and Stephanie. Did I forget something?
Okay.
Okay.
I was just going to say, or me, because I'm on that group, too.
Or Nathan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to take a moment of silence for, uh, first readings. Okay. Uh, this Saturday, I am sponsoring a Easter egg hunt at Garfield Park, along with the Topeka Community Foundation in conjunction with Garfield Community Center. You guys are more than welcome to come out. At ten o'clock in the morning, we will have an Easter bunny, so you can come out and take photos with the kids, put them on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, whatever you do. And at eleven A.M., we will be having the Easter egg, or, excuse me, Easter egg hunt start off. Mr. Gary Slimer will be, uh, Master of Ceremonies, President of the Natoma Group up in North Topeka. We, uh, let's see here. It'll be, we'll have, uh, zero to five and then five to eleven, so young children are all invited. I also want to welcome Senator Dole home. He'll be coming home next week, Monday and Tuesday, touring the entire state. I do invite my colleagues at eleven A.M. at the Dole Institute on the University of Kansas. He will be, uh, presented a small award and will be speak, uh, speaking on, uh, some of the issues in today's society. And in the rest of subsequent day, he'll be touring small rural communities, Holton, uh, Rossville, and various cities throughout, and introducing himself to our elderly folks in the community. So I'd, I do recommend that you come out and see him. I would like to, uh, take this opportunity to thank KU Libraries, along with Deborah Dendridge of the Third District, for inviting myself and Councilwoman Hiller out to be a participant in the Brown versus Board Education Symposium impacts and how it results in today. I appreciate that very much. It was fascinating to listen to these law professors from Oxford, uh, Harvard, University of Ohio, University of Chicago. It was very, very interesting, and I do appreciate, uh, them extending that invitation out. Uh, again, I would also like to invite folks out to the half-cent sales tax. Again, we'll be at Avondale this Thursday and be at the library on Monday. And I, I do want to make a, make it publicly known, Chief, you got my support. You got my support for Marshall, and I want to make sure people know that. Let them say what they want. You, you got the Democratic support, so that's important to understand. Uh, in, in regards to changing the agendas and our structure, I would ask the city manager to consider, in, in light of my high appreciation for all of our staffs, despite the contrary of some of my colleagues, uh, considering it, letting some of these folks go home. There's no need for a majority of the people who are currently in the audience to stay here. So that may be something for you to consider. If they don't have any prudence to the agenda item, I think they should go home. They've done a lot of great work. And three-one-one, I do have an issue with the three-one-one queue. We do not have, you cannot see the action that we're taking in the three-one-one queue. So that's something I'd like to put on the radar for the city manager and make sure he's working with I.T. I would highly appreciate that. And lastly, the Fiesta has started. I have some schedules for the food, which will be starting April twenty-first. We had a great write-up in the CJ Online today. On the three candidates that we'll be having this year, it's a smaller crowd. Father decided to only do three candidates rather than the six that we had last year, so it's highly appreciated. Food sales start on the twenty-first at the Belandrin Center at the base of the Fiesta Bridge, which is on the other side of Branner, Branner and Stewart. So come on out, and, Mr. City Manager, can we put that schedule on the website for the city? Thank you, Your Honor. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to give condolences to the Mentor family. Uh, Ms. Mentor was a missionary, uh, a very big pillar in the east Topeka, also a member of, um, Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church, and she passed away. Um, she did a lot of missionary work and took, um, uh, medicine and started a hospital over there. So she will truly be missed, not only in Africa, but also in, in Topeka. Um, also, I would just like to say that, um, I hope, um, when we start the new agenda, Mr. Mayor, um, that you give us ample enough time to, to talk and not rush us through. Um, we're going to start forty-five minutes late, uh, later, so it'll be forty-five minutes later when we get out of here. So, um, sometimes I feel like I'm cut off, and, and I would just appreciate it. Um, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to say it. I'm, I'm just going to, you know, hold you to the carpet if I feel like I'm being cut off. Sometimes I'm in the process of thinking, so, um, I, I know, um, this body has agreed to cut the council, or the, the number of meetings down, but they are going to be longer, and I respect that, but I, I hope you would also respect that. Um, it's going to take me a little bit of time. Um, also, I'd like to announce the, um, Noto District, the first Friday, on, um, May the second. They're having a huge celebration, and we hope that you guys will come out, um, bring your children. It's a family event. I don't know who the little poster boy is. I don't know how he got to be the poster boy, but he's awful cute. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Mrs. Deliseva?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I wore my teal, um, in support of the YWCA and their efforts. If you notice, everybody on, on the podium here has their little teal, um, little ribbon. The teal ribbon signifies something that people do not like to talk about. It's kind of interesting because when I told the mayor and the city manager what I was going to address tonight, they kind of looked at me with concern because it's just one of those topics that we do not want to address. And what I am talking tonight about and what this represents is sexual aggression, um, month awareness. And just a little bit of statistics with regards to this issue. Every two minutes, someone in the United States is sexually assaulted. Every seven hours, someone in Kansas is sexually assaulted. One in five women have suffered rape. Um, nine out of ten victims are females. And the sad thing about this is that only six percent of rapists are sent to jail. Um, just so that we have some closer-to-home statistics, I know that, I'm looking at my statistics, I'm sorry. In the year twenty-twelve, we had thousands of reports, um, but only thirty-nine percent of them, um, actually make it to the police. And these are things that are staggering. These are things that, that, that hurt, and people do not want to talk about them because they're difficult things to hear. And I just want to raise awareness. I am a huge believer of the YWCA. I don't know if anybody knew this, but we are the only YWCA in the country that has a safe house. Want to talk about the wonderful things that we have in Topeka. Um, they do wonderful work. They do not only provide awareness to sexual, um, people, uh, people that have been abused in this way, but they also provide support for women that have suffered from domestic violence. So the services are completely free, and I would encourage anybody that is facing a difficult situation to go ahead and seek help. I tell you what, they are life changers, and I can vouch for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Deliseva. Now, if you have other items to come before the council, we are adjourned.